Meeting at 3:00 at August 26th. And the first thing on the agenda is discuss scheduling a fall special town meeting. And Leah, do you have any? We have four dates in front of us, the 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th of November.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to suggest after November 5th because then you would have a full board after that time. Because that's when we're thinking about scheduling the special election. But that's just my only suggestion.
I would say definitely after the 4th, Veterans Day. Probably not because people take long weekends.
18th?
Yeah, I'd go for the 18th.
Let's tentatively schedule it for the 18th, but let's make sure we know what's on the agenda. See that in fact, we need one.
What time?
Very good.
7?
7. 7. And the schools are available?
Well, I haven't been able to check with the schools because, you know.
Okay. So let's tentatively schedule it for November 18th at 7:00 PM at Assaw Arms at High School. Item number two, discuss bid receive for Highway Department Module Office Building and the next steps. Apparently, the bid came in higher than what we've put in the budget. And the person doing the bidding seems to want to negotiate to a more appropriate level. So that Nate Darling and Frank Muniz are talking to the person that did the bidding. So we're not ready to discuss item number two, so we'll table that to some future meeting. Third thing on the agenda is discuss raising the current hotel motel tax from 4% to 6%. And discuss accepting provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3D. So my first question to Maureen is, how much do we collect at the 4% rate today?
So we haven't got any of our receipts because we just started collecting in July. So the DOR hasn't returned any of our money yet. They collect it and then disperse it to us on a quarterly basis. So we wouldn't know until, was it September or October for their quarterly? It would be sometime in the next few months. Well, we haven't got our first disbursement, so. But that would be at the 4% rate. So we don't even know at 4% of how many units yet.
Right.
I mean, how do they do it? By people on their tax returns?
So there's a, I have a handout for you guys for KP Law. And there's a way that they do it, but mostly it's the places like the Airbnb and VRBO and the HomeAway. It does it automatically and it collects it through the state automatically for that. But again, we won't know how much it is until it comes up for our first quarterly payment because we had not exercised that yet. So the two options for this question are either raise it from 4 to 6% and/or discuss accepting provisions of the 3D. So what 3D is, is a community impact fee that you could raise and put on it. And the community impact fee would go directly to, it would go directly to, what do you call it? A fund for affordable housing. Yep, it's affordable housing or, I can't find the other one, infrastructure. So we could make that go directly to affordable housing or infrastructure. And that would not go through the state. That would be payable directly to the town of Lakeville.
Through those companies again?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have the legwork on that?
Yeah, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have, it would just come to us automatically through that. We don't have any mechanism to find out who's doing it that's not paying taxes yet. Again, we'll have more insight as those numbers come in and we can kind of match it up with what we see online. But it should tie out. But that would probably be the better option than raising the actual tax at this point if we wanted to do the local impact because it is an impact to our services.
I mean, the first question is, is how much money is involved? And we don't seem to know what that number is. So you go to town meeting to have them adopt a town meeting, Chapter 64G, Section 3D. First question would be, well, how much money are we going to get? And no one has any answers.
Not yet.
So are we rushing this because of the town meeting is coming? Or the state simply changed from 4 to 6% and that brought it up?
We, the new law came in in January of 2019 and that's why it's coming up now. And we can make a change, but we can only make one change within one year. So if we make one change now and we want to go change something later, we can't do it for another year.
So there was talk about this though back in March, correct?
Yeah.
Was that tabled at that point for more information too? I feel like, you know.
I'm not sure what the reason it was for being tabled, but I know that it did come before the, I don't know if the selectmen, but I know it came before Rita at that point and she had it listed to go on an agenda. What happened after that, I can't say. But I know it's been floating around for a while and this is a cleanup item that we either do it now or would not get on fall town meeting.
I don't mind waiting until June, town meeting.
I agree. I don't know if we have to make a motion or if we just table it again. I'm not real sure what the, but I would rather we have more information before we go forward, especially if we can only amend it once a year.
Table, let's say for April?
Table for April.
Should be the first where we table everything. I've never had that before. You'll like that. Agenda item number four, discuss and vote to move funds from Community Development Committee Funds to Police Department Gifts and Grants for Police Station Ribbon Cutting Ceremony up to $2,300. Ribbon Cutting Ceremony for the new police station will be on Sunday, September 8, 2019 from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There's a large to-do list attached. The exact components of the ceremony are in the works, but expected expenses include chair rental, Dan Clark, who is the singing state trooper, beverages, cookies, bagpipe players. And Mitzi has recommended that the funds from the Community Development Committee Fund be transferred to the Police Department Gifts and Grants up to $2,300 to fund the ceremony. So I could make that my motion that we simply transfer the money.
So the vote would be to expend the balance of the CDC Fund for the police station event?
Do we know how much is in that fund?
$2,300 total.
That's what's in there total?
Yeah, we could put it in the gifts and grants anyways.
Yep.
To transfer it to the gifts and grants.
Yep.
We can do that.
If that's your motion, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nate, you just came in and item number two on the agenda which we said table for renegotiation was on the, was on the modular building for the Highway Department. Are you here for that?
Yeah, I was.
Want to, I guess, let's bring it back and just give us the update perhaps?
You're the first official.
Here we go. So real short, we went on to bid again for the office for the Highway Department, but it came back at $205,000. We had 185, I believe appropriated. Some of the cost was burden on the town for utilities and whatnot. The module lease company that bid the 205 offered up a negotiation. So I went back to them on Friday and said, well, what can you do for 170, giving us $15,000 for utility connections. So they came back today with a proposal. I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I will. And then I'll come back to the board and slack on with the recommendations.
So only need to delay it for a couple, until the next meeting then? The question I had is, we had an offer from a local builder who's in, who's in the trailer park business, if I want to call it that. And he had offered to sell us a double wide at his cost or close to his cost. Did that go away?
That's a pretty long conversation.
Longer than two minutes you just did.
The past superintendent of the streets did not want a mobile home transitioned into an office trailer. We looked into it. I spoke with the head of the manufactured building program in Massachusetts. The change of use from a residential use to a business use from a building code perspective was pretty cut and dry. You'd have to change some access signage, make sure everything was ADA compliant. The issues were electric and plumbing. Plumbing, you can't use plastic on a commercial application and you need protected wiring. So there'd be some upgrades to it. We've looked at it, the cost for that, and Tracy, you might remember better than I because you were directly involved, around $115,000 for a 1,200 square foot mobile home, basically.
So 115 plus all the?
Plus any kind of upgrades, yeah. Might be another $30,000 to, you know, to do upgrades because we'd have to do some selective demo, open up some walls and.
Okay. So it's 130 to 150 versus the 170 you're shooting for that's already done?
Correct.
Okay. So back to.
Next meeting.
Table it for two more weeks, assuming we have a meeting in two weeks. Review draft appointed committee handbook. Town clerk and Tracy worked on the handbook to assist the appointed board committees and commission members and gave us a draft. The town clerk would like the board, if in favor, to vote to approve the handbook for use. So I guess part of my question is, was this discussed at a management meeting? Was it?
So this just had.
What do the managers or supervisors think of it?
This came up, well, this is for the boards and the committees.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's the boards and committees, but it came up because it's been in use. It's been in use for about three years now and we want to formalize and accept the document and to do that, it has to go before you.
Okay.
The only issue I have is that there's section in this that doesn't agree with the next one coming up.
Okay.
So if this is in a rush, I think today's going to be a table it kind of day because to be more specific, in the section, in the selectmen's, the draft of the selectmen's handbook, the whole appointing people is different than how you actually get appointed in this. So I don't think we.
So do we want to just look at this document then?
Want to do this one?
I would rather get this one done because it's been in use for, the one we're talking about, the committee handbook.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that, it depends on what we do with this one though, because if we're going to change the selectmen's one, then we're going to have to change this one again. So they almost kind of have to.
This one's already in use, so I would say if we're going to vote on anything, we vote on this one today. And the other one you use is informational and then we'll regather another time.
Okay. I mean, I really.
I understand.
Yeah. No, I just, oh, I marked that copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, on this one, it's actually calling everything different though. Like in this, in this one, it says, you fill out the application, you write a cover letter. In this one here, it says something called, let me see, where is it? Plus in this handbook for the appointed committees, it works with, I believe, the selectmen's assistant. And this one here says that appointed committee people are going to be working with the town coordinator.
Okay.
So now we're changing job descriptions too. So I actually think both documents need to be worked on.
Wow.
It's a big day.
Pretty crappy meeting. I don't think we've.
You're welcome.
I don't think we've ever tabled anything, so there you go.
This is just reviewing the drafts, so it's not.
Right. But I don't really want to sit here for two hours and check through every, if we can table it and maybe work on it.
Do we have a time that you want to relook at this? Do you want to relook at it in a certain timeframe?
Well, I think the selectmen's handbook is going to take, am I writing, a little longer to go through. So I would say you can't do this one without this one unless we approve this one and.
And that's my thoughts, that we would approve this one and then mirrored the language in the next one?
Right.
Okay. Fine. I'm okay with that because that's not changing job description around, so, you know.
So the motion is to.
Approve the appointed committee handbook.
Yes, so that's my motion.
I'm going one second, there's one other. Yeah, and then there was just little cleanup things like posting on social media vacancies versus, so that was it. But I can second that to approve this one.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So agenda item number six, review draft operations of select board.
So that's the one you want to do.
Handout, and that one is going to be tabled.
Yeah.
But is this something you want to work with?
I'll work with Leon.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like the way the draft is written now, it's written more for town manager versus a town administrator. So I just want to be, you know, clear on all the, on what's going on. And then obviously, we have to change that part.
Sure.
From the appointment so that it's reflected the way we just approved it in this, in this copy. So, yeah, and this might take, you know, a little bit. I don't know if we have anything like that already somewhere. I know that, you know, there is guidelines in the Mass Municipal Association's spambook for selectmen and.
Yep.
We have bylaws and we have, you know, all other things, but definitely that one needs to be gone over with.
So the select board handbook, we would table. So we're on item number seven.
All right.
Do you want to take over from there?
Who is the chair right now? I think you should have a motion that you table it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table, select board handbook, agenda item number six.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to vote.
We, right, right.
All right. Excellent. So we've just been going in order?
Yep. So seven is next.
All right. Excellent. Do you mind if I take it?
You go right ahead.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Go right ahead.
Excellent. I get all the hard work.
Table everything.
Did you table everything?
Hopefully you do a little better.
Yeah, I'll figure out exactly what you guys did already. All right, great. So apologies for traffic. Agenda item number seven, this is a ratification of the vote to close the transfer station at 7:00 PM due to triple E until the triple E ban is lifted. So we voted August 12th at the meeting under new business to close the transfer station at 7:00 on Tuesday until the triple E ban, not bank, is filled or lifted. Wow. Look at that. It's amazing what your brain can do. So we need to ratify the vote. So I'll make the motion, we ratify the vote to close the transfer station at 7:00 PM on Tuesday nights until the triple E ban is lifted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda item number eight, it's a vote to accept the letter of resignation from Wilton Gray, the fourth, from the Conservation Commission. He has submitted a letter of resignation effective immediately, which has gone to the Conservation Chairman and the Town Clerk. They don't have any associate members that could be promoted. So in this case, we will make a motion to accept his resignation and post the vacancy.
Madam Chair, do we need to vote to accept people's resignation in the future or is that not?
I don't believe that we need to do that in general, but I think, you know, in terms of really posting the vacancy is more the action, so.
There's a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nine, this is a request from the Agricultural Commission to appoint Crystal Ing. Is that how you pronounce Crystal's last name? Anyone know? N-G?
I say Ing.
I think it's Ing. Okay. So the Agricultural Commission has two vacancies. Crystal sent in a letter of interest, met with the Agricultural Commission. They're requesting a selectmen vote to appoint her to the Agricultural Commission and if appointed, the term will expire July 31st, 2020. I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I see Justin's midact. Did you get a chance to, did that go first at all? Did you guys talk about field two?
Nope, that's under new business.
New business, okay. Do you have to go somewhere at all? You're good? Okay. Sorry, I didn't have to like point the pen at you, right? I just know that you're back there and I know that was really, the intention was to make sure that we got that on there and I didn't know if that had been discussed. All right. Agenda item number 10, the hours of operations of town-run offices. So back in 2011, apparently the board had set operating hours for the town office building. So we have a voted list of hours that was brought up. And I guess apparently, there's been some complaints from residents and so that was brought up at the department head meeting last week. And so we have some conversation here related to Monday night and Monday evening hours, which I guess are extended for the town clerk's office and have been. And the question was, the town treasurer's office is also posted for those extended hours on Mondays and what do we want to do about them? Apparently, this falls under our jurisdiction with a vote in terms of operating hours. So I'm happy to have this conversation.
I'm happy to keep them as is.
As the voted hours?
At the voted hours. At 7:00 PM.
I have no problem with that. So if you want, then we can, I'll make that motion if you want to second it so we can have discussion.
Well, they, okay, but that already is in effect.
Right.
By, by December 12th.
Yeah, that's true. I guess no action is the same.
So we can reaffirm it somehow, but I'm for keeping it as is.
I actually, I'm always about information. I think things are different now than they were in 2011. A lot more town stuff is accessible. Right now, where we don't have a great securities plan in place, I think the nature of the stairs gave an extra level of security, real or believed or for the departments that were open. But, you know, I know Lil has been there by herself, you know, at least once. I'm not so sure because Jesse's been, you know, on maternity leave. So maybe this isn't what we need right now. So I, you know, I just, I don't know. Can we survey the town somehow?
Do you have a proposal in terms of something you'd want to see that's different than what's in front of us and that's active and voted on?
Yeah. Like if, if, if we could get a log from the offices, how many people actually come in? Maybe if it's only one or two people a week, then maybe what we need to do is stay open one Monday a month. But it's kind of hard to say what's right and what's wrong when, you know. And I certainly don't want people there. You know, if we need to hire a detail to make people feel safe, then maybe that's something that we should do because I wouldn't want to put myself there if I wasn't feeling comfortable. So, you know, I don't know if anyone else wants to.
Well, I think no action is. We have an existing set of hours that has been voted upon in the past, which has been in operation for eight years. We're getting complaints that people are not able to access the services during those hours that are posted and have been voted on. So unless there's a change in proposal, then I don't see, I mean, we can table this, but the action is that there is no action because the hours are what they are. You know, understanding security concerns, that's something that's being worked on, you know, at the town level. So that is something that, you know, is, is being considered. You know, I think that that's, they're set hours. You know, I don't really care as long as we're meeting the needs of the residents. I think that in a lot of cases, if we don't have hours that are extended, people may have a, you know, you're going to have, you're never going to please everybody.
No, you're right. You're never going to please everybody, but you know, right now, I do have a concern because it's going to start getting darker, you know, whatever. I'm just.
Both?
Right. I've run a business for, you know, however many years and when it starts getting darker, we change our rules. I know it's easier when it's private business than when it is municipal government, but you know, I know ideas were mentioned. So my thing is, even if we say this is what we have to do right now, I would like the town administrator through the department heads to work on just some information for us going forward so we can make a more educated decision.
Well, the only other thing then would be to consider the fact then that maybe Friday hours are not till noon. I mean, that's really where you're making up the time. So if that's, I mean, the alternative being, we're not going to cut down the hours of operations of the departments in total. They need to work a full week and therefore, you know, I would be okay with that if an alternate suggestion is one that includes extended hours, you know, on a day that otherwise is not extended. I mean, I think that's really what you're looking at. You're not going to have, just take it away and then not add it somewhere else.
Right. But that would come in getting more information.
Well, I think you need to be open one night after 5:00 unless someone comes up and says, no one's come for X number of nights.
Right.
As far as security goes, I would think Tommy Robinson could have the door locked with a bell.
Right. See, that's what I want to see, yeah.
This is something that's been in existence since 2011 and that's why you have two departments that are supposed to be there.
Along with.
And they have multiple people in the department. So I would certainly agree that there shouldn't be a single person.
Right.
In the group, but with multiple people with the fire department 30 feet away and they can certainly walk through, police can walk through, but to lock the door and have a bell, I think would take no time at all.
Right. But, you know, like I said, I'm okay with the hours. I'm not suggesting we change them, but that doesn't mean that I wouldn't like to see more information, so.
Okay.
Right.
So let's table this. I'll make a motion to table because it's in effect as is.
Right, it's in effect.
So there is no need to take action. We'll just ensure that the hours are adhered to.
Yeah.
So no action's taken.
Yeah.
All right. Agenda item number 11. So this is, let's see. So 11 and 12, let's go to 13 just to get that over and done with, meeting minutes, because I want to make sure that everything else that's kind of lumped together is lumped together. So meeting minutes, these are selectmen meeting minutes, January 29th, 2019, March 6th, 2019, March 11th, 2019, March 18th, 2019, two sets, March 25th, 2019. I'm going to put those, five, six, together because we had a different change in board over at that point in time. So I'll make a motion to approve said meetings.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a motion.
Because I wasn't here.
So an emotion to approve the meeting minutes of April 2nd, 2019. I make that, April 2nd. Very controversial meeting minutes, April 2nd. Good?
You've got the second on.
I'm second. Second.
I mean, there is some correction on this one. I just do want to note on page five, when we were discussing pay grades, we were comparing council on aging director to library director and we decided, so I did specify that typically library directors require master's degree, so if we can just. that typically, library directors require master's degree, so if we can just reflect that in there. That's page five, that, it's the first big paragraph. And then on page four, on the second line, the word close should be next to friend.
So, we don't need to necessarily revisit that, but I will reject that change, because that was put in originally, and I took it out, because there is no such definition.
But that's what you said.
Right.
You had, that was your disclosure that you said about knowing the candidate, and you said you had a close friend relationship.
Yeah, the, the relationship categories under disclosures include friendship. It doesn't say close friendship.
Right, but that's what you said.
But the disclosure category is friendship.
I don't care, that's what you said. You wanna watch it? Minute 39.
We don't need to go down the road of being not.
You're right, so you could just agree to put in what you said.
Not respectful to each other. It's not exactly how I choose to operate myself.
I mean, I also wouldn't mind putting the candidates' names in there too, just for the record.
I'm okay with the way it is.
Well, I'm not, so.
That's fine.
All right. So, I had a motion, we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not in favor of the way these candidates made.
All right, excellent. Let's talk about new business. Let's go to the Parks Commission for a moment. So, Justin's here to represent the Parks Commission. I don't know if you have anything prepared, or if you want to just talk about it.
I can see to it, though.
Okay. Yeah, so, I don't know if you want to come up. Do we have anything in writing on this, or was it just through email?
It was just through email.
Okay.
I think you had that.
Okay, yeah, previously.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So, basically, and you want to?
Yep, go for it.
Summary. So, what we're doing is, there's two bids out for Field Two, so it's the second field on 18, and we feel like the second bid is not in the best interest of the town, based on a few factors, and one of the main ones being the references they gave were really bad. So, it's the difference of $1,000 between the two bids. The first, second, or excuse me, the second lowest bidder is the current person who just did the first field, who's working on it now. So, we feel like that was the better choice for the town, based on all the factors. So, we're asking for an approval of a non-lowest bid, based on that criteria.
Yeah, can you just give us for the motion, who the bid is being awarded to?
Yeah, the two bids.
Yeah, yeah, so just the, the second bid, so that we know if we make a motion appropriate.
The second bid is from Nor East Hydracede.
Nor East Hydracede, okay.
And I think Scott sent to Maureen and other people, I think, all of the reference information and attachments, and then Mike Nolan also sent a note as well, so.
Okay.
Both of them.
Yeah, and that went through town council as well.
And that went through town council to make sure that we were doing it the appropriate way without bidding the first bid.
Yeah, I know, it's obviously, lowest bid is usually the goal. I don't know if I totally get it.
Yeah, other criteria as well.
We made sure everything matched up.
Yes, it is Tracy.
Standard procurement procedures require that if the park commission is gonna vary from the low bidder, we needed that in writing. I had expressed that to Mike several times, that I needed a memo from the park commission detailing your vote, giving us your vote, and then detailing the reasons why they want to get rid of the first bid and go with the second. We never received it.
I think.
I got it on Friday night. I don't know that.
I don't have it.
Okay.
I'll see if you were on it, because I know you were having some trouble getting some email.
Yeah, so if we do that, then we'll just have to put this on another agenda, just to ratify it, because this is under new business, and we're trying to.
Yep, but we got it all Friday night in writing.
Yeah, so we should have it in writing, and it is one request to put it on the agenda, and one request to.
Yep.
Okay.
I do have some concerns that we may be facing a bid challenge from the, the low bidder. I just wanna put that on the racket, that it may very well come with a bid challenge, which would stop all work.
And then, and I had brought that up to Mike.
Yeah, to town council as well, right.
Had a conversation with him, let him know what our procedure was, and that we made sure we had references from both.
Yep.
And that was the tiebreaker there.
Yeah, so we should probably just make sure that we have a ratification vote fairly soon.
Right.
You know, if you want to.
So, tonight's vote is to award to.
To Nor East Hydracede, exactly.
Make the motion.
Yep, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, and then the discussion.
Yep.
Is, I certainly agree that you tread on dangerous grounds when you don't award it to the lowest bidder. However, you've done your due diligence.
Yeah, well, not me, but yeah.
On both companies, were checked for references.
Yeah.
And fellow came back with three bad references, I believe.
Yeah, which is crazy, because those are your best, you gave the names, which is a crazy.
Right. So, I'm not rejecting it for price, I'm only rejecting it because you had bad references from the person. I don't belittle, not that you did, I don't belittle the $1,300 difference, because it becomes a legal nightmare.
Yeah.
So, I want to point out that the attorney has said he's okay with the approach that you've taken of checking out the references. You have unfavorable references from the lowest bidder, and we're going with the person that has good references.
Yeah.
So, I'm just pointing that out.
Even the way that, I'm sorry.
Could I ask, did we get references on Nor East?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get them.
Yep, that was Friday night at like 7:00 or 8:00 at night. So, Mike must have either had problems getting to you, or just omitted you off the email chain.
Because I definitely need all that prepared.
Right.
Yep, and so what we should do then, too, is make sure if you want to call another meeting after this one, within two days, just to do a very quick, like, two-minute ratification of the vote, just to make sure that, again, that's been, you know, posted appropriately at a meeting, so that we can vote, but we need to ratify the vote, because it was.
Say it again.
So, the issue being that it wasn't properly posted on the agenda, because it's under new business, so we can do this, but we need to have a meeting with 48 hours notice, so that we can ratify that vote. So, I think, you know.
So, if Leah's available, we'll have Maureen just post a meeting that's convenient to you sometime after 3:00 in the day.
Yeah.
So, that would be Wednesday, right?
Yep.
Wednesday afternoon.
We need it at least 48 hours. So, for Wednesday, it'd be like at 7:00 at night on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'd have to run back to Lil and have her posted, and you might want to give her a little more courtesy, so. Okay, so motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, let's talk about agenda item number 11. So, this is to discuss the scheduling of a special election, potentially, for November 5th, 2019, and a vote to approve the warrant. So, because I will no longer be serving in this position on the board, there are a couple options that are afforded to the town to either fill the vacancy now, or to wait, if you choose to, until the next scheduled annual election, which is in April. So, what happens with this is that we're kind of squeezed in between a time period, based upon the fact that my resignation is effective on September 8th, and from the effective date, or really the date that it was submitted and then effective, up until, there, there's two kind of time periods, and what we end up left with is like a month of availability, based upon the fact that it has to be done in a certain time period after the resignation, but it can't be done within 100 days of the next annual election. So, it pretty much leaves the month of November available for you to determine if you want to call a special election. Now, I can't participate in the conversation of calling a special election or having that conversation, so I'm going to just kind of introduce it, but you guys can have that conversation, so I'm turning the meeting over to you, John.
Leah'll speak to it in a minute, but I'm certainly for a special election. The suggested date given to us here was November 5th, and the reason why I do that is we get into an early budget season, so I think it's somewhat critical that we have some parties step up that want to be a selectman and fill that, because we'll be well into the budget season from February on, and what happens is when a new selectman gets appointed April 1, the budgets are 90% done, and they've not been part of that discussion. So, I'm for one, for having the earliest election possible, which seems to be November 5th. So, Leah, what's your opinion?
I agree. I'm still a new selectman myself, so I think a full board is the way to go, so I would say the earliest we can do it, the better.
Okay, so do we, Maureen, are we picking the 5th for some specific reason? I'm okay with the 5th.
64 days after the second, of the resignation, and then we had to leave time, a little bit for the town meeting, if we choose to have it, so that's why the 5th comes up.
Okay.
And it's available.
Okay.
Which is a bonus.
The motion I make is that we have a special election to fill the vacancy of selectmen on November 5th, 2019.
Can I say a speech?
Sure. And any further, okay, and is there any further discussion? So, go ahead.
Would that be okay?
Yep.
I'd like to submit a letter of interest.
I think you have to come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Joseph Loving.
Thank you.
Having you here today. Today, I'd like to submit a letter of interest for the Board of Selectmen vacancy. I did type this up, so I'd like, if you're okay with quickly taking a glance at it, I'd like to give that a copy to each of the Board of Selectmen that are currently serving.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I'll give you a minute to quickly read it, if you'd like. In addition, I'd also like to give the Board of Selectmen a copy of my recent resume, showing my qualifications. Some of you may know who I am. I did serve on Finance Committee for Lakeville for a while. I ran for Treasure Collector. Very positive experience for both of me, and I'm looking to get involved in the community and give back to the community, and I'm serious about getting involved and continuing getting involved and helping out the town. I do have a financial background. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in management as well. I currently consult, I help municipalities, I help small business, as well as unions, closing their books, reconciling cash. I'm an accounting guy, so I understand a lot about the numbers. Being part of the Lakeville Finance Community Council, I got a good exposure to the budget process, what was involved, and basically, I'm just asking for consideration for a possible appointment as interim selectman, and not have a special election, which would be a savings cost to the town and the process of having a special election, and serving as an interim Board of Selectmen until the annual election in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I don't know that that was one of our options that was listed.
And I, and I wasn't sure if there was a, something that gives the powers to the Board of Selectmen to appoint, if a qualified candidate is indeed present at the time to kind of help, like you say, fill the gap in the need of, of what you guys need.
Right, I think, I think our options are do nothing, run with the two, two select board people, fill the vacancy through a special election, or give the certain powers to the town administrator.
Okay.
So, I'm for doing the election, and we really will only have a void of about a month in that process, so.
Sure.
We certainly did well jumping on the political side of our run for selectmen, so.
Yeah, and again, just trying to help, you know, what you guys need help.
I hope that we get several people to step forward, and that we can have the opportunity of having a meet the candidate night here, or probably here.
Sure.
With the newspaper being here.
That's fine.
We'll see who the moderator might be.
Sure.
But I'm hoping that there'll be several people.
Sure.
At least we know we have one.
And I get, and I get that, I really do, and I think it really comes down to having qualified people in these positions that actually have background exposure, experience, not just in municipality, but other experiences that you can bring to the table that might help. And I'm a, you know, I'm a management guy, trying to process, improve, and work with what we have, and obviously leverage my experience, especially when it comes to budgets, and, and again, I would be a student, just as much as a facilitator of the process, and I realize that. But I just want to say, if there was a shot at even being interim appointed, even till special election, I'd be okay with that too, but that's for the board to decide. But I just wanted to submit a letter of interest, as well as my resume for, and that's all I ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I'll just say, even though it's not part of the discussion, that unfortunately, that's a position that can't be appointed.
Totally understandable.
So, it has to go through Master of Law, it's actually an active position regardless.
Yeah, not a problem.
So, but thank you for your interest, certainly, you know, I think.
And I wasn't sure if it was an appointed power or not, and again, I'd be happy to throw my hat in the ring when that time comes.
Perfect.
As well as Treasure Collector, it was a great experience, I think we had a lot of fun. You know, win, lose, or not, it was a positive experience, and again, you know, that just shows that I am serious, I am trying to get involved, and appreciate your time.
Yeah, and, and again, I mean, I think that's, that's important, and, you know, good for the remainder of the board to call that special election, because it's a very important position in the town, and it does demand a lot of time and attention, and it's a thankless job, and I know that, you know, you know that from serving on Finance Committee as well, and, you know, I, I do hope that, that we get some enthusiasm, and again, then when April comes around, you know, whatever may happen then too, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and again, even with the special election, it was a fun campaign. It was 100% grassroots regarding the Treasure Collector, and I had fun with it, so I will have fun with that as well, and like I said, just something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I think the vote was the vote to approve the warrant, is the, was that, oh, I thought, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Warrant.
The vote to approve the warrant.
Madam Chair, it's a two-part vote. You need to vote to schedule the special.
To that one.
Mr. Vice Chair.
That one I did, I did that one.
The town meeting on November 5th.
Okay, so that one I did. And we, we seconded that and voted for that.
We gotta keep going up.
Now, the second one.
2019, from 12 to 8:00 PM, and vote to sign the warrant for the special election on November 5th, 2019.
So, the motion is to sign the warrant.
It's a two-part motion. You got to schedule, and you got to sign.
Okay, we schedule for November 5th, and vote to sign the warrant, so stating the election on Tuesday, November 5th, 12 to 8:00 PM.
Sorry, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
All right, back to agenda item number 12, if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Chair. All right, so, the conversation that we want to have is really related to whether or not, and I think that this is something, you know, that's more of a, a long-term consideration that we have to always consider, that in the event, because we're a three-person board, that we don't have the ability to call a quorum for any reason, whether or not that may happen or not, there is an option that's available to give powers or emergency powers to a town administrator in the event, and only in the event, that the Board of Selectmen is unable to obtain a quorum of its members. So, you know, for example, things, and there's only certain things that we would have potential issues with, with regard to, say, liquor licenses, or, you know, say there was only one member of a Board of Selectmen. At that point in time, there is no board, there is no power for the town to continue and to do its certain jobs that it otherwise needs to do, powers to appoint, powers to approve, you know, certain items and certain conditions, unless we have a backup plan. So, that is what this really is. It's not giving any additional powers more than what the Board of Selectmen is granted or authorized to have by being a board, but in the event that something were to happen to another member of the board, because we only have three, we don't have a backup and a contingency plan. And I think that that's important to note, too. We will have two months where there will be a potential where if you can't get both[1760.71] We will have two months where there will be a potential where if you can't get both members of the board together, that you do not have a quorum, and certain items may halt, you know, in terms of business. Granted, again, there are no powers that are granted provided that you have a quorum of the board. So, that being said, I think, you know, that was the impetus for this conversation.
Is, is this done at this meeting, or does this need town meeting approval?
It would be done by a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. Because it's kind of, it's in the special act in some ways pursuant to Section 2 of the special act that created our town administrator. And what this also might be is a good impetus to have the conversation about the various forms of government that exist or that are available to towns. Uh, but this really is just a last-ditch effort in the event that when you're acting as a two-member board for this period of time, and thank you again, at least Joe, we know somebody will be running, so we will have somebody to appoint. But certainly, you know, this is a town in which not very many people step up to volunteer for a role like this. So I'm glad that now, you know, we know we have at least one candidate, so we will have a full contingent of the board. But again, there's going to be a two-month period in which we will not have, you know, three members of the board. So if one person's unable to meet and somebody needs something done, a curb cut, we're unable to do that. And that's really what this entails.
Leah, what do you think?
Madam Chair, I also want to add, in addition to that, um, any actions taken by the town administrator must be ratified after, when the full board takes effect. So it's an extra protection power.
And that says that-
At the end of that opinion from KP Law, stating what we should do.
Well, it says he recommends that the Board of Selectmen vote.
Of course.
Tells he would have to. No?
The last part?
Well, you could put that into the, you could actually probably put that into the motion too.
I would put that into the motion too, because it-
Uh, I would only do that if that was in the motion.
Okay.
One's, one, he's kind of recommending it, and one, I would want to do it.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, so you could add at the end, "And any such votes shall be ratified-"
At the next-
By the board at the next-
Meeting.
Uh, yeah, called meeting. And, and that's really just, you know, again, trying to make sure that the town isn't going to be left in a lurch or in a situation in which due to completely unforeseen circumstances, we only have one member. And we don't know what that might be. Again, extended illness, you know, somebody is traveling, somebody can't make a meeting, and something needs to get done, and we have a 48-hour window, and we may have something that's going to hold up town business, and that's not the intent.
Okay.
Okay, so I am not prepared to, like, approve something like this today. While I admit, it's definitely something that needs to be, need to be concerned, because there is going to only be two of us, and you're right, anything could happen at any time. But, you know, something like this, I, you know, I'm a frequent visitor to the selectmen's office, and I just heard about this last Friday. So I definitely need more, more time to, you know, find out what exactly is involved. I mean, I have a responsibility to the people of Lakeville to make decisions, so I take that seriously. So I really would need more information as to what potentially could is involved. And then there is another part two where it says something about, or they're designated. And, you know, I don't, I hate when that gets put in there like that, because it's never very specific if it's the Board of Selectmen's designate or the town administrator's designate. So I would need clarification on that, because if it's the town administrator's designate, and I've turned my power over to the town administrator, who can turn that power over to somebody else, and that I'm definitely not comfortable for-
Where, where, where are you reading that?
You know what? I have this one here, because-
Why don't you find it?
Yeah, all right. Well, give me a minute here, and I will find it for you. And then, you know, the other thing too with, you know, which is a conversation between, you know, me and Maureen, but as long as we're at it, um, you know, we're getting the answers from council, but I'd really like to see the questions too that are asked, because it would help to clarify some of the thought process.
And this can be something too, that can be taken away in the event that the board decides later to vote it out. It can be a temporary placeholder.
Right.
I don't see why you even want to not have it. I mean, it's really just in the-
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah.
My only concern, which you answered-
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda.
Was to-
Where?
To the next meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, to give emergency powers to town administrator or board designate, so, you know-
We're giving it to the town administrator.
Yeah.
We're not doing it to a board designate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we still have, what, two weeks with Mitzi? So, I mean, I would really feel more comfortable cleaning up the language and actually having more time to study it.
Yeah, I, I'm good with it.
I'm all set with it.
Okay. So I'll make the motion. So I'm, I'm going to move in accordance with Section 3Q of Chapter 416 of the Acts of 1998, that the town administrator be authorized to exercise all powers and duties vested in the Board of Selectmen pursuant to said Chapter 416 of the Acts of 1988, the federal and state statutes and regulations, and the bylaws and regulations of the town of Lakeville, but only in the event that the Board of Selectmen is unable to act due to an inability to achieve a quorum due to vacancy and/or extended absence due to illness, and only to the extent that the town administrator deems it in the best interests of the town to take such action prior to the filing of the vacancy in accordance, filling, sorry, of the vacancy in accordance with law, and any such votes, and I'll give this to you, Tracy, shall be ratified by the Board of Selectmen at the next called meeting.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Discussion from the floor.
Chair?
No, come on up.
You have to come up to the podium.
Chair, you're there on six S. Montour. I met with Maureen last Friday on this, so she knows what I'm about to say. Um, I'm quite concerned about this particular part, not because it's Maureen, but because she's a new hire. And any new hire usually has a three-month probationary period where we see if they're doing the job that we want them to do. To give a new hire after three weeks, the emergency powers to run our town, which our town, actually our Board of Selectmen were chosen by the taxpayer, I think is wrong. I think if you're going to give emergency powers to anyone, you should be giving it to somebody who has been elected by the townspeople, be it your town clerk, your town treasurer. So it isn't Maureen that I have a problem with. It's a fact that she's a brand-new hire. Most people in the town don't even know her, and now we're giving her the same opportunity that you folks have. I don't know that we'd do that anywhere else. I don't know anywhere else where you get a job and three weeks later, you're handed the keys of the company. And that's kind of how I feel about it.
I appreciate your concerns. I think the issue is that otherwise, nothing potentially will happen. It only happens, just to try to alleviate that concern, it only happens in the event that the board is unable to achieve a quorum. It's the only time that that actually, and there's only certain things that the board is designated to do. So in the event that the board cannot achieve a quorum for a two-month interim period, we don't want the business of the town to halt.
Or a two-month interim period?
And in that case, I would say it should be for an elected official, someone who's been elected by the townspeople.
I appreciate your-
Not appointed by the, especially with the Board of Selectmen appointed the administrator. And now the administrator might be able to appoint his or her board designate. Just doesn't feel very transparent to me.
That's not in the motion.
Okay, second one. Do you folks do remote, um, participation?
No.
No.
And why don't you?
Don't want to do it. I absolutely don't want to do it.
In an emergency situation, you wouldn't do a remote. Someone who was out on surgery or whatever, home recuperating, and you wouldn't give a remote participation?
We don't have that.
The state gives you that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have not adopted that.
Maybe that's a better thing to adopt.
Thank you for your opinion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um-
Are you going to ask for a opposed, or does it go under the assumption that it's opposed?
I just asked for those in the affirmative.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
So I don't get to vote?
I assume your vote is no, but you're more than welcome to.
Just give it, give you a vote.
To Tracy.
Tracy, I vote no.
All right. Old business. Discuss the Route 79 project funding. So, uh, we have a special election, I guess, is that what we call it still, coming up um, on September 10th, I believe it is.
Yes.
Which is a vote for $4 million for Route 79. I don't know if that's what we're discussing. Maureen, I wasn't sure if you had anything prepared that you wanted to discuss on it?
You have it.
Want to hand out?
The reason why I asked it to be somewhat on the agenda is if I read all of Lakeville's Helping Lakeville, which is a bad name for the group, I think, uh, is, there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding. So at the town meeting that we recently had, the voters at that town meeting authorized us through Article 7 and through Article 8. Article 7, I'm only explaining this because hopefully people will watch it on TV again. Article 7 simply is $2.3 million for the Route 79 rehabilitation, rehabilitation project. Article 8 was $1.7 million for various roads in the town of Lakeville designated by Franklin Moniz. And what we're voting on, on, uh, let me get the dates right, on September 10th, Tuesday, between 12 noon and 8:00 PM, is the vote for the, uh, to fund that. It does not talk about an amount. The amount was talked about at the town meeting. It simply is the way that it has to be presented. So I wanted to state that the cost of the Route 79 is $2.3 million, expected to be. And most of that is taken for land takings, and hopefully it won't come to that number. $1.7 million for other roads. There also seems to be some misunderstanding that it's a state road. It's not a state road, it's a town road. And that what's being added is one sidewalk and a bike lane to what's existing there, uh, which would widen the road a maximum of six to eight feet. And that's from Franklin today. So I just wanted to talk about the money and what was being voted on. There seems to be a lot of misunderstanding of the numbers, uh, the width of the road, that type of thing. So I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
All right. Thanks, John.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add that, um, people can go to the town's website under the Highway Department page. Um, it has, um, the town meeting information on there. So it, you know, shows maps of what's going to be done, so that's a good resource also.
Yep, yep. And I think it's important, and I think the newspaper did a good job of it the last time we discussed it, but it would be good just to reiterate that again. Come out and vote, whether, however you vote, I don't, uh, I just encourage you to vote. That's it.
All right, so, any other business? No. All right, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.